Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Councilmember Rowe is absent. Please rise for pledge of allegiance and remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. One moment of silence for three longtime residents that we lost in the last couple of weeks. John Shishon Esposito, lifelong Madison resident, died on the 8th at the age of 92. Born in Madison, February 2nd, 1927, graduated Madison High School, served our country during World War II. Devoted and loving husband of Amelia Palma Esposito for 65 years until she died in March of 2019. After 40-year career with Gary O'Paving, he transitioned to a new career as a crossing guard for the Borough of Madison, stationed at the Kings Road School for many years, where the kids loved him and he loved them. And for those that want to recognize his life, there's memorial visitation this Saturday from 9:00 to 10:30 and a service at 10:30 Madison Memorial Home. Also June Roan, who died on October 20th. She was predeceased by her husband Fred. They were married for 70 years. She was born in 1925. She married her high school sweetheart Fred. They moved to Madison shortly after and raised her four children and lived here for nearly 70 years. And also a moment for Pearl Pratt, who died last week. She lived to be 101, having been born on April 25th, 1918. Loving wife of the late Robert Pratt, they moved to Madison in 1951. She lived until a few years ago and she was the last few years neighbor of Ray Cody and Peg. Pearl was employed by the Morristown School District and when she retired at the age of 65, she became a water aerobics instructor at the Y. She did that for 31 years and retired from that position at the age of 96. So let us take a moment to recognize three great longtime Madison residents, John Esposito, June Roan, and Pearl Pratt. Thank you. I have a motion for the regular minutes of September 9th, 2019.
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of September 23rd, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion for executive minutes of October 16th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Already been discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of October 16th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, welcome all. First, very important, I want to note that today is National First Responders Day. Every day we should show our gratitude to the men and women who serve Madison each and every day and stand ready whenever an emergency strikes. Want to thank Madison Police Department, our Fire Department, Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps for all they do for the community. And if you see a first responder, even if it's not today, every day of the year, please take a moment to thank them for their dedication in keeping us safe. On October 22nd, I gave an official welcome to Atlantic Health Rehabilitation Institute at Droll Farms. While they had ribbon cutting several months ago, they're now accepting patients, so it was great to see the amazing facility in operation in an incredible setting and it certainly is a big change for anyone that has gone to Mount Kimball for rehab. And among the patients, it was great to see one of our own residents, one of our crossing guards who is recovering at the institute. And then on the 24th, I attended the Sustainable Madison with Sustainable Madison Chair Kathleen Cacavale. We attended the Complete Streets Workshop sponsored by Sustainable Jersey. The all-day workshop confirmed that we're doing well in creating complete streets and giving us ideas for improvements so that we can have safety for vehicles, bicycle, and pedestrians. And that night, I got to go to with an invite to the Central Avenue School for the annual Central Avenue School Family Read Night, where I got to read Which, Which Is Which. Heard me do multiple syllable words here, that was a tough one. It was three different groups as they rotated through. It was a lot of fun and I highly recommend the book. And then this weekend, we were celebrating Halloween from Friday through Saturday with Friday night was the annual trunk-or-treat held right out in front here. And then Saturday was the annual Halloween parade, both sponsored by The Chamber, both incredible successes. This year for the trunk-or-treat, there was the record number of trunks and quite a few children enjoying it all. And then downtown, the parade was as big as ever and afterwards, the trick-or-treating at the stores, it was packed trying to get around Main Street. So a great day, all in all. Right. We're waiting for the governor, so we'll do a, I've got a proclamation and then we might go to our first discussion item right after that. All right, get to show it all off. So this is a great honor. Kathy has been a dedicated volunteer for us and we have recognized her great efforts, but now she's been recognized beyond our four square miles. So let me go through this proclamation and I'll let you show off your award there. Whereas Kathy Kultus is a lifelong resident of Borough of Madison, graduate of Madison High School and Hood College. Whereas born into prominent rosica, rose-growing family, Kathy is a member of the Madison Garden Club, award-winning member of the Garden Club of America. And whereas Kathy and her husband of 60 years, Bob Kultus have been active members of Rotary for many years, with Kathy having served as Recording Secretary and Youth Exchange Officer. And whereas longtime member of the Madison Historical Society, Kathy served on the Board of Trustees and in positions of President, Vice President, Program Chair, and Secretary. And whereas also as a member of the Madison Arts and Culture Alliance, Kathy has served as a roundtable facilitator and secretary. And whereas a dedicated volunteer, Kathy has shared her passion for trees as a member of Friends of the Madison Chay Tree since 1994, serving as Secretary and Tree Nursery Coordinator. And whereas is Park Advisory Committee Member since 1980, we're thinking it might be even earlier than that, but it was a long time. Kathy has chaired the committee from 1988 to 2000 and served as Secretary as well as being part, being a Parks Advisory Committee Representative, the Open Space Committee. And whereas in 1977, Kathy encouraged the development of Nature Nuts Program, a five-week summer youth program that teaches children in first through sixth grades about nature and protecting the environment, a program Kathy is devoted to and continues to oversee 42 years later. And whereas on October 23rd, 2019, Kathy was recognized for her dedicated service in receiving the Outstanding Community Volunteer Award from the Morris Park Alliance in conjunction with the Morris County Park Commission. And I'll add one more whereas, whereas we don't know when she gets to sit down and relax with all the work she does. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body proclaim October 28th, 2019 as Kathy Kultus Day in Madison. There's less than four hours left, so enjoy it. And congratulate Kathy on receiving the Outstanding Community Volunteer Award, extend sincere thanks and appreciation for her many devoted years of service on behalf of Borough of Madison. Kathy so much.
Thank you.
There. Huh? Yeah, Mayor?
Thank you.
There we go.
As I said before, it takes a lot of people to get me here where I am today. The Parks Committee has been a wonderful organization to be a part of and it's been a rather long time, I think 47 years or so. So, and I noticed they're starting to reorganize a little and I'm sure they're going to put term limits in with the new reorganization. But it's taken other people, as I say, who have made this possible, so thank you very much. And thanks to the Borough for submitting my name.
Thank you. Okay, we're waiting on Governor Cody, so we'll move to agenda item number one. Eva, want to come forward, please? a park. She took the time to write the letter herself and from what I understand, her parents didn't find out about it until it was time to find out where I lived and she had to get the address, so had done all the work and research on her own. I then challenged her to come up with a design and submit that and dutifully, she completed that. Would you like to tell us a little bit about your project?
So what I wanted to do with them was to redo them because they were all like knocked, like they were all like chipped and the boards were all like falling because if you, if you like sat down on it, the board would wiggle, would wiggle, like and you could literally move the board. And so they needed new screws and the paint, it's green dark paint. So it was all, like it was all like gone basically and it was all brown. And I just wanted to repaint them and fix them.
Yep, and we have the, yeah. So this is her design work on one bench showing happiness. And then the other, caring, helpful, and community. So very well designed, so we're looking forward to seeing that at the Canterbury Pocket Park. And one of the things we have to do as a council to make sure this is done properly is have a resolution that gives you permission to do that. So can I have a motion from the council to pass this resolution?
Sure. I'll move Resolution R. 305, 2019, Resolution of the Borough of Madison Authorizing Painted Benches Project at the Canterbury Pocket Park.
A second.
Any council discussion?
That's a great idea.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing it up.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
All right, so what we're going to do right now, we're going to sign this and our clerk is going to be the witness and you get to take this copy, so as you're painting, if someone says, "What are you doing here?", you can say, "I have official permission." A special seal on there and before you sit down, I'd like to have someone come in to say hello to you because we have Governor Cody waiting out there. Governor Cody? Come on in and I want you to say hello to Eva before we let her sit down and then...
Congratulations. Want to give you some advice? Hope we're well.
I would think she's already a future mayor. All right, thank you very much. I'm looking forward to, we'll have to have a little ribbon cutting when your benches are ready. How about that? All right, thank you for coming out.
You have a way with people.
So we have a special guest here today and I want to cover two things with him. One, before we have a little presentation, there's been some questions about our signs around town being a stigma-free community and this is our commitment to mental health. People get sick physically, there is no stigmas with that. When people get sick mentally, there is also often judgment and that's why our commitment to being stigma-free and Governor Cody has committed, and his wife, have committed themselves to mental health awareness and helping those in need, if you'd like to say a few words about a stigma-free program.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see you all. So stigma-free, it's to fight the stigma. I often compare, now my wife, all right, who had serious mental illness, she says that publicly, and both her breasts removed before she was 45, but she will tell you that breast cancer was a walk in a park, shall we say, compared to mental illness. Everybody wants to walk for breast cancer and that's proper. We raise a lot of money against breast cancer. Now if you ask somebody to walk for mental health, you're going to take a step back. We have a crisis in our country and probably in the world. Things have changed. People now are isolated. Sweden just announced for the first time ever that they have more than 50% of all their households as one person. Great Britain just announced a formation of an Office of Loneliness. In our country today, last year was the least amount of block parties. We all know that the new generations do not go to church or temple, mosque, whatever, in the numbers that previous generations had. Now, when I grew up, we lived next to the church, just like Raymond did, different church, Catholic church though. So that was the focus of our social life, our sports life, our family's life. So that provided to us a lot of mentors in many ways. So the younger generation does not have that like we did. Our children are having less children. The less siblings you have, the less opportunities for friendship. So we're becoming more and more isolated. So I was born and raised up top of funeral. So we probably did about 175 calls, funerals, every year. I never heard of a teenager committing suicide. It did not happen. So today in New Jersey, we have probably about 1,400 teenagers with failed attempts and we have last year, for the first time, broken 100 successful attempts. And unfortunately, every day in our middle schools and in our high schools, kids are talking about suicide. Now, when many of you were young, I'm sure you didn't talk about the pressure and anxiety, those words didn't exist in the vocabulary of younger people. But today, it does. So we have to be mindful and we have to be helpful. It's a difference societies of worth. So those signs are Madison is stigma-free. That creates a discussion. What does that mean? Why are they up? What does it mean? So hopefully you can have that discussion. I said before, it's a new world out there unfortunately and we've got to do what all, whatever we can to help in this fight for mental illness. And our colors are lime green and black and my basketball teams that I coach always wear lime green and black. And when people ask why, I tell them why. Now, can I now get on to another subject? I'm going to present this check to you, but before I do, so I read what Raymond had sent me about where the money was going. Baseball fields, football fields, soccer fields. So I have to say this to you, Mayor. Some six years ago or five years ago, I coached in a tournament and it was at Madison High School. And I had to coach five games, back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back, in a gym that was not air-conditioned. You think you can do something for basketball for once in this town? Oh my God. You go out to these fields, they look like the Jets for Christ's sake, right? So please, Mayor, before I leave office, can we have air-conditioning in the high school gym? All right, listen, so I want to present to you, on behalf of the state of New Jersey, this check quote-unquote for half a million dollars and spend it wisely on basketball. Thank you and God bless you, Mayor.
Governor, thank you very much for taking the time to visit and your effort for us to get these Green Acres fundings. Our MRC is an incredible place and it's been a partnership from our Open Space Fund with the county and the state and the state continues to help support us on that great improvement and it's been a game changer, literally, here in Madison. And also want to thank the governor for his work on behalf of the stigma-free and clarifying the reason, one of the reasons why the sign is not, doesn't say it out directly because it's a conversation starter, so let's be ready to have those conversations. We are now moving on to reports from committees and anyone that wants to leave at this point is always welcome to leave, but you're also welcome to stay and learn even more. Public Safety, Council President Bailey.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I want to remind everybody that we have a new emergency alert system known as Alert Madison and it will start this Friday, November 1st. The Borough of Madison will be replacing Nixel for borough-wide notification and using our new emergency alert system known as Alert Madison. So residents are encouraged to sign up for Alert Madison for free by visiting www dot alertmadison dot org to continue to receive the same emergency alerts and mass notifications via email, text, or phone as they currently do. And if you have any questions about Alert Madison, you can email alertmadison at rosenet dot org or call 973-408-8789. So this is it. You all should have received this in the mail and I recommend that you sign up. And then the Fire Department on Saturday, October 19th, had their entire five-inch hoses inspected, that's 4,000 feet of hose, by a third-party company and they were tested and passed. And tonight, we have on the agenda, an ordinance introduction for support of our first phase of a multi-phase plan to improve trails in Memorial Park. First thing we need to do is we need to ask DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, to approve permitting the area because there are wetlands and that requires construction documents. And it is a multi-phase project which will enhance the trails, create new trails, and just make it a way more usable site. So I'm really excited about it, so I hope you'll support it. And then last week, thanks very much to Carmela Vitale, Captain Ed Nun, and Carmela and Michael Pelissier, and I, we organized a little seminar for realtors to discuss requirements by the Fire Department when one or two family homes change ownership or rentals. And it was really well-attended. It was very good. Captain Nun did a terrific job in explaining what the requirements are and the realtors had some really good questions. So that was very helpful and I think we'll probably do it again and we put the information up on rosenet. Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Do you have anything for utilities?
Yeah, I have to do utilities, sorry. From the Electric Department. We had a lot of incidences of no power. On October 16th, Seven Oaks Circle, due to high winds, a large limb came down, causing electric outlet outages at two homes. October 19th, there was an emergency markout at Staples Plaza due to a water main break on their fire line. On October 20th, the standby crew was called for half-power at Central Avenue School, but the crew couldn't find any problems. They replaced a blown fuse and checked the transformer, which was good. So they believe the problem was probably located inside the building. And the Electric Department replaced a meter pan at Green Avenue and Shumpike Road condos. And the October 22nd, the standby crew was called out to Seven Winding Way for water coming into the electric panel, so they took care of that. The, on October 23rd, there was a secondary electric line embedded in a tree, so they removed that line and installed a porcelain tree guard. And they received calls, October 23rd, from houses on Green Avenue because of flickering lights. I mean, they're really busy. And then there was the final one, on October 24th, the Electric Department responded to a tractor trailer accident at Shumpike and Prospect Place involving a down pole and wires and once on-site, it was determined that the pole was the responsibility of JCP and L. From the Water Department, Madison Plaza experienced a water main break and so the Water Department was down there with the Electric Department. There was a lot of damage to Carl's Appliance and the Strike Bowling Alley. On October 22nd, the Water Department had to deal with two service leaks, one on West Lane and caused by PSENG and the second by a private contractor on North Street. And then on October 24th, there were a number of valves on Anthony Drive and East Street that broke in the off-position and they had to go and repair those. That's it from the Electric and Water Utilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Finance Borough Clerk, Mrs. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. As a reminder from the tax collector, fourth quarter taxes are due on November 1st. Payment must be made to the tax collector's office by November the 12th at 4:30 PM in order to avoid an interest penalty. The CFO is announcing that tonight, we're going to talk about the State of New Jersey Division of Local Government Services Best Practices Checklist. The checklist is an important tool that was created by the state to help municipalities operate correctly and effectively. Towns that do not complete the checklist or do not score enough points would lose financial aid from the state. Fortunately, Madison has always received high marks. Anyone interested in learning more about the Best Practices Checklist should contact either Ray Cody or Jim Burnett. Also from the CFO, tonight council will be voting on a resolution that will authorize the Borough to contract with Munisape, Munisape works with the Spatial Data Logic System, which is a software that runs the construction office, land use, fire inspections, and Health Department. The contract with Munisape will allow us to take online credit card payments for those departments. Using this technology will make it easier for residents to pay for permits and easier for employees to process payments. Last week, the elected officials from both Madison and Chatham Borough met at the Joint Meeting Sewerage Treatment Plant. We had an important discussion about reviving the Joint Meeting Surplus Policy. I've been working with Chatham Councilman Bob Weber and administration from both towns on this important topic. I expect that the Joint Meeting will adopt a more comprehensive and forward-thinking surplus policy in the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Engineering Department, Setheli and Son Contracting, doing the side work, curb and drainage improvements on Community Place as soon as the water service replacements are complete. Contract document review set for Gwen... Contract document review set for Gwen Wild Road reconstruction was sent to NJDOT last week and the design work for the 2020 road improvement programs progressed and project documents will be available for public review before the end of the year. For the sewer, the National Water Main Cleaning Company completed lining of storm sewers on Loveland Avenue last week. Video and testing confirmation from the contractor has also been received. Candlewood Pump Station, emergency repairs were initiated last week. Successful replacement of one of the three motor pump units was completed. An additional unit will be replaced this week. The Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza Restoration Rebid Contract Documents were prepared last week and will be advertised this week. And then the DPW Recycling Center Contract Award to Matina and Son will commence within the next week. And skylights were installed at the electric storage building. From the Department of Public Works, first line, we are working on leaves. They have started going around picking up leaves and they will continue to do that through December 14th. Keep in mind that we just keep going and have that date as a motivator for residents. They hope to do at least three turns, complete turns to the town depending upon the weather. They planted 14 trees for shade, for the shade tree in various street locations. There is a program where at least once a week, we are blowing off the sidewalks downtown to keep up with the leaves. Grass is still growing and we are still mowing for sports. Sustainable Jersey, the state came in and Madison has achieved silver status for sustainable jersey, which is a really wonderful thing and we have to thank the Sustainable Jersey Committee for putting together our submission and pulling all of that together. And finally, when we talk about recycling, remember that we are recycling pumpkins this year. And so when you are finished with your pumpkin, please bring it down to DPW. There will be a container there for your pumpkins and they will be taken to a farm where cows will munch happily on them and you can purchase the steak that comes from the pumpkins. So that's that. And then on a personal note, you know, Madison has always been a stigma-free community as far as mental illness is concerned. When someone is, if someone is dealing with the challenge of mental illness, Madison has always reached out a hand to people. So I would like to recognize that we're not just starting to be a stigma-free community. We have been a stigma-free community for a very long time.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Hooper.
Thank you, Mayor. For the seniors, Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, work is beginning to identify Madison residents who would benefit from the Northwest CAP Telephone Reassurance Program as there are no Madison residents currently on the list of seniors to be called. A meeting will be held with Meals on Wheels to obtain some names of people we can check with to see if they are interested in receiving calls. All Northwest CAP programs will be published to identify clients as well as volunteers to support the program. Garden plans have been drafted for spring at the senior center with volunteers and master gardeners. We are working with the Environmental Commission to do a demonstration of T-shirt shopping bag project at the senior center in order to get seniors engaged in this project as we move toward implementation of the new plastic bag ordinance. At the senior center, they're looking into possible adjustments to the center's bus schedule in response to needs identified at our meeting at Rexford Tucker. Options for a new senior bus are being evaluated. With TRITOWN 55+ the Coalition is currently in the process of reassessing its strategy where in the third year of existence and a strategic, we're going to be meeting with specific entities, groups of people in Madison, Chatham, and Chatham Township to develop a strategy going forward. We're also developing plans for a housing forum in early 2020. From the Director of Business Development Downtown Development Commission, new this year, the DDC will be looking, will be holding an indoor/outdoor holiday market for six weeks, November 7th, 14th, and 21st, and December 5th, 12th, and 19th. The market will be held in the Madison Community Arts Center at 10 Kings Road. The hours will be from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. The market will be a great place to shop for holiday gifts and items for holiday entertainment. So it's not just fruits, vegetables, and such like that. It'll be other things as well. The Office of Business Development has assumed responsibility for all borough Madison parking permits. Commuter resident parking permit renewal applications have been sent to all current holders who have until December 1st to complete the process. After this date, remaining permits will be made available to those on the waiting list while available. Questions regarding parking can be sent to parking@rosenet.org. Merchant slash employee and residential tenant renewal applications will be sent before mid-November. And the Chamber of Commerce, scarecrows and cornstalks on Waverly Place will be removed on Thursday for early morning disposal on Friday, November 1st. Rosie the Rose City Reindeer Scavenger Hunt will begin on Saturday, November 30th and end on Monday, December 16th. The 2020 Taste of Madison is scheduled for Monday, March 23rd at the Brooklyn Country Club. The 2020 Madison Camp Fair is scheduled for March 15th. Plastic eggs and plastic bags will not be part of the 2020 Easter Fun Fest for obvious reasons. The Madison Community Arts Center, there are about, you know, eight items on here that are on this flyer. You can see out in the front, but a sample of them on the front table, sample of them on November 1st, a tailgate fundraiser for the Madison Education Foundation. The first children's theater production will be on November 8th. Kits Interactive Theater presents Fun and Frolic in Colonial Times and Pioneer Travels. The improv comedy show, The Flip Side, will be held on Saturday, November 9th. The Museum of Early Trades and Crafts has nothing to report. MACHA had nothing to report. The Recreation Department had nothing to report. The Mayor's Wellness Program had nothing to report. And the Recreation Advisory Committee, there, we're still in the process of finalizing a well-crafted and agreeable ordinance on user and field fees, confirming everyone's there, in the process of confirming everyone's interest in the 2020 RAC membership or asking them to identify another member of their organization to take their spot. They will also be reaching out to the Board of Education to identify a member of their organization to join the Recreation Advisory Committee for the new year. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. And health.
Thank you, Mayor. Residents are encouraged to continue to receive flu vaccine through the coming months if you have not already gotten it. Health Department has limited doses available for residents who may have missed October's scheduled clinics. An after-school vaccine clinic will be planned in the next few weeks as vaccine supply allows. Check rosenet or call the Health Department, 973-593-3079, extension one. Residents are encouraged to update their dog, cat, rabies immunizations as needed at the upcoming rabies clinics sponsored by the Health Department. Saturday, November 2nd, from 9:00 to 10:00 AM, there will be a clinic held at the Chatham Township Public Works Garage, 405 Southern Boulevard. Madison's annual clinic will be on Saturday, December 7th, from 10:00 to 12:00 at the Public Works Garage at 34 John Avenue. Please call the Health Department if you have any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and petitions.
Unreceived, Mayor.
All right. We are now on to our first of two invitations for discussion. This is limited to the agenda items. Our big crowd, I'll go through those. We've already discussed the Canterbury Park benches, but you can comment on that. The best practices inventory for both authorities and for the borough and the open space funding for Memorial Park. And let me go through the resolutions that are the consent agenda for those watching at home later also. Resolution 305, which was already passed, is the authorizing the painted bench project at Canterbury Pocket Park. 306 is amending Resolution 287, authorizing medical and prescription drug plan offerings under state health benefit program. The Horizon HD 4000 was admitted on the original one, that's the high deductible plan. Resolution 307 is authorizing submission of a 2019 Sustainable Jersey grant application. 3,309 is rejecting bids for collection, hauling, and recyclable materials and authorization for rebid. It's because one bid was received and the borough attorney and qualifying purchasing agent determined that the sole bid exceeds the cost estimate for these services. 310 is authorizing reduction in restoration bond for Forageralda Farms, which is Atlantic Health. The bond will be reduced from $150,000 down to $6,000. Resolution 311, authorizing the system to accept electronic payments, credit card payment, and authorize execution of agreement with Municipali to provide such services as Carmela reported in her report. So if anyone wishes to comment on those resolutions or the agenda items, please step forward, state your name, your address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we close this part of the meeting and we move on to our agenda discussions. Our CFO, he's got the first two, which is best practices of inventory for both authorities and the borough.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two discussions. One is a requirement before we discuss the best practices checklist. It's one of the items which says that we have an annual just kind of review discussion of the authorities in which we participate. So with that, we participate in a number of authorities, but two that are focused here are the Madison Housing Authority and the New Jersey Public Power Authority. New Jersey Public Power Authority was created a few years ago. It is a sister organization to the Public Power Association of New Jersey. So it's terrible, NJPPA and PPANJ. I don't know why they created two organizations with almost identical initials. But the New Jersey Public Power Authority will allow multiple municipalities to work together in a coordinated fashion if we want to do certain things, whether it's metering programs, hiring of a staff person that could work in multiple municipalities, or purchasing generation collectively, or even developing generation. So that organization has not been terribly active. We're still in the phase of kind of determining where that organization fits. So there really hasn't been a whole lot of activity. You get their annual statements. We review them and I'm a member and member on that authority. Second is the Madison Housing Authority, which we obviously deal with on a number of occasions and we're dealing with the affordable housing situation here in this town. I don't know that there's any questions that you all have, but you know, from our standpoint here, it's really just a requirement for us to have had a conversation and acknowledge that we have these two authorities that are functioning in the borough.
Any questions on that? All right, we'll go on to the next one.
Okay, so that allows us to check off another and get another point on our best practices checklist, that first discussion. The best practices checklist is advanced by the state of New Jersey. The state fiscal year 2020/20 Appropriations Act requires the Division to advance a questionnaire to the towns and have us answer it. The inventory assesses each municipality's compliance with various laws and evaluates implementation of fiscal and operational best practices. Carmela talked about it, or Councilwoman Vitale talked about it during her report. We have a score of 42 out of a possible 46. We need 30 points to get our full state aid, so we are, as Councilwoman Vitale said, with very high marks. I call that an A+ or at least an A. There are a few items that we did not get points on. I'll talk about those. I'm going to kind of flip through the pages with you. You had a packet in your, that was delivered to you. So a couple of items in terms of things that were covered in here, just to give the public an idea. When was the last time you adopted a fully vetted employee handbook? When was the last time that you updated that employee handbook? That's the type of, that's one of the type of questions that's being asked by the state. Number of questions on transparency, does your municipality maintain an up-to-date municipal website? Does the municipality have an official social media account? And are there written policies establishing guidelines and access? There's questions on cybersecurity, which we've talked about significantly in executive session. Does your municipality perform daily computer backups to off-site, to off-network devices for all data and operating application software? Does your municipality employ defensive software to protect its network? These are the type of questions that are asked and we answered yes to all the ones that I just mentioned. There were 86 questions. Some were surveys, but most generated either one point or half a point. The ones that we did not, I want to focus on the ones where we did not get a point. Some of these you've heard before, some you have not. Question 14 asks if our municipality had an accumulated absence liability trust fund. What does that mean? An employee like David Maynes, who recently retired, accumulates sick time. Do we have a trust fund to pay for a retirement like that? We don't, we look at this differently. We talk about having a surplus and having a good surplus. That's part of what our surplus funds. Instead of having a separate trust by having it in the surplus, it gives us flexibility. So I know the surplus has been a topic of discussion. That's one of the reasons we don't need to have that separate trust because we have a robust surplus. So we didn't get a point on that. And it's really, in my opinion, a debatable argument. The state and the people who offered this said they think that's the right way to go, but if they understood our situation, they would say you deserve a point because we have robust surplus. Second is, do we have a storm recovery reserve? We lost half a point for that. We do not have a storm recovery reserve. Again, same situation. We have the strong surplus, which gives us flexibility. We have the utility which gives us financial flexibility when we have storm-related issues. So we lost a point there. Audit, the third one is audit under core competencies for financial administration. Does the audit, are there any exceptions to the audit and any comments that have not been addressed in the following year? As we know, much to Councilman Hoover's chagrin, because I know he's not happy with it, but we have a segregation of duties comment in our audit that we and about 200 municipalities have. That's a recurring comment because we do not have a separate pay window where you'd walk into Borough Hall, go to the construction department, get your permit, they would give you a receipt and say, "Go pay $25. Go downstairs to the window, pay $25, go back upstairs to pay the construction department." We don't have that, partially because we have the police department in another building, the health department in another building, and here, and it's also a matter of cost and a number of towns don't have that. So we lost a point for that. And we lost, and one correction on item, question 33, thank you, Councilwoman Bailey, for noticing that it should be October 28th. That's what we just talked about, is the core competencies on reviewing our authorities. And then real quickly, we missed half a point because of an interesting question that's new this year. It asked, "If your municipality provides residential garbage pickup or contracts with a private hauler to do so, is garbage pickup scheduled for no more than once per week?" And that's, we have twice a week, Councilwoman Coen's laughing at me because I know she wants twice a week pickup and supports twice a week pickup. The state is saying, in their opinion, best practices should be no more than once a week. I think if they went down to Esquire Barber Shop, they'd say that they want twice a week garbage pickup there. So we lost half a point there, but that's okay. And then the final one is the municipality's director's ratio, which is the assessed value to true value. When that drops less than 85%, we need to start thinking about having a revale. The County of Morris forwards an abstract of ratables every year. You're able to analyze it and look at it. There are a number of towns that are in, closer to needing to do a revale, higher up on the list than we are. Chatham has a ratio of 77.4%. So what does that mean? For easy math, a house that's worth a million dollars, I'm sorry, a house that's worth $770,000 should sell for a million dollars. Did I say that right? A house that's assessed, a house that's assessed at $774,000 should sell for a million dollars. It just has to do with how we have it assessed. Madison's ratio is 82%, 82.69%. Morris Towns is 75, Butler's is 77. They're all going to be going through a revale before we are, but as a tip-off to the governing body, we should be expecting that we'll be getting a call from the tax board in the next few years. So we don't typically take action on that as a municipality. We haven't until the tax board calls us. We're expecting that call in a couple of years. That was another point that we lost, but as I said, 42 points out of a total for 46. I call that an A+. This will be posted on the website. I think it's a very interesting document if people want to learn about municipal government. This could be a Rutgers course, just all the different questions that they ask here, why they ask these questions.
Any comments or questions, Carmela?
Any comments or questions, Carmella?
Jim, going back to, what is, 62, the ratio of the assessed values. So we're at 82. They tell us 85. You know, I look at these all the time, and there's a lot of them ahead of us. But this last revale costs us a substantial amount of money. Are we thinking that in maybe 2020 budget, are we going to put money aside like we did the last time to start thinking about, because the cost factor is probably going to go up? We have more houses.
Yeah, you know, the last time we actually did a special short-term borrowing and just pulled it out of surplus and paid it back over a three-year period, you can do kind of what they call an emergency appropriation, not really emergency, but that's interesting to potentially just use. If we perform better than expected in surplus again this year, that's a perfect use of the surplus funds. It's a one-time payment, so I think that's an excellent idea.
Any other questions or comments?
Excellent job. I used to get an A+. I didn't see them too often way back when. And open space funding, Austria, you already teed this up a little bit, so.
Right. Do you have any questions?
So again, this is related to potential trail project in Memorial Park and get the ball rolling.
Right, right. And hopefully, I mean, we've already talked to the county trail grant people, so they are aware that we want to do a multi-year project. They were receptive, but they said, do your first step, DEP to agree.
Good job.
Good time.
You know, the feedback we've gotten on Summer Hill and also the trails that we have in the MRC has been so positive that I think people are looking forward to more. And certainly, it's a challenge. Memorial Park is our largest one, and it's like today would have been tough to walk through there.
Correct. It's beautiful, but yeah, there are some challenges, and we just want to make it better.
I think one of the challenges is, is no, is nobody down there. I mean, that's going to have to be considered before you start thinking.
Every one of our parks, everyone has, Summer Hill Park, too.
Boots. I'm telling you, people, get the coats. They love that stuff.
Call Tracy.
So this will be Ordinance 52, which is listed for introduction. There are no ordinances for hearing tonight because of the short time in between meetings, and so the Ordinance 49 and 50 that were introduced at our last meeting will be heard on November 13th, which is also a Wednesday meeting because of Veterans Day. We are now on to invitation for discussion. This is when you may comment on any topic. Can I ask you, keep your comments to three minutes, but I will give you a one-minute grace and cut you at four. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. And seeing none, we move on to the introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for Wednesday, November the 13th, 2019. All be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up Ordinance's first reading. Ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinances by title. Please note that Ordinance 51-2019 is being pulled. There is some confusion with that, and we'll have that clarified. We expect to introduce it on November 13th. So Ordinance 52-2019.
Ordinance, the Borough of Madison appropriating $50,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for Professional Services NJDEP Permits and Trail Improvements to Memorial Park.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 52-2019.
A second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
Right. Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Consent Agenda Resolutions 306 through 311, 2019.
A second.
Any council discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
There is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher registry?
Current fund is $3,724,470.47. The general capital fund, $63,359.40. The electric operating fund, $569,506.15. The electric capital fund, $8,203.82. Water operating fund, $5,101.62. Water capital fund, $5,808.56. The trust, $23,353.36. The total is $4,399,803.38.
Oh, I move approval of the vouchers.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Yes.
There is no new business.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All favor?
Hi.
You got that one down.
Tell him stay.
Yeah, but, no, I did.
Meeting done.
Yeah, he said, obviously, it's all marine, it's all marine. See, now you're conflict coming out of another thing now.
Because John Colateno.
The trails.
That's right, now it's conflict.